Dylan Jennings. Michael Berlin.
Here.
Richard Corpola.
Here.
George Mika.
Here.
Martin Vitek.
Here.
Richard Huber.
Here.
Doreen Hannanen. John Weiner. Kathy Schutte.
Here.
Gary Murdick.
Here.
Lauren Nagro.
Here.
Matthew McKenzie.
Here.
Philomena Quebec.
Here.
William Metzinger.
Here.
Clarence Campbell.
Here.
Patrick Kinney.
Here.
Charles Ortman.
Mr. Orban, ask to be excused.
Elizabeth Frannick.
Here.
Richard Pufa.
Here.
One excused. One absent. Nineteen present. Please make sure you're using your microphones.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda? I'll second it. By Kathy Schutte, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Rich Huber. Seconded by Rich Huber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to a public hearing. Need a motion at one of the public hearing.
Mrs. Lauren Nagro, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Motion by Lauren Nagro. Do we have a second?
McKenzie will second.
Seconded by Matt McKenzie. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, we're officially in public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any comments online? Do we have any comments?
I have a comment, this is Rich Huber. I have a comment about the committee meetings when they have them. I usually go on my phone and listen to committee meetings. But lately, last couple of months, they usually have the wrong number.
This is a point of order that we're in public hearing to discuss the fee increases for public health.
Oh, okay.
All right, we had it three times, a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Kathy Schutte. Seconded by Marty Vitek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Anyone from the public want to comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you and supervisors. My name is Glenn Carlson. I'm the town chair of the town of La Pointe. I know you're going to be talking about the ending the police agreement with La Pointe at today's meeting. I want to say that we do appreciate the recommendation coming from the committee that this be effective at the end of this year to give everyone a chance to review and renegotiate an agreement. We do believe that some agreement is preferable to no agreement. And so, we would, we have been working on pulling together information that hopefully will assist in this renegotiation. And hopefully, we can begin that sometime later this summer so that we aren't up against the wall with budgets. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any more public comments? What? Yeah, go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, like I was saying before, that I try to listen to all the committee meetings by phone, my cellphone. And for the last like couple of months, you know, it's almost impossible. It's either they give you the wrong meeting number or else it says that this number cannot be activated by phone. And so, like, I think it's pretty important so you can get on on your phone to listen to committee meetings. So, I think it's something that should be looked at. Whoever sets those things up from each department, so, and hopefully it'll change so you can listen to the meetings. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else for public comments?
Please use your microphone.
Oh, there's different things on there. Okay. How about that? Okay, I've taken off my hat as a county board member and I'm here as the executive director of the aging unit. I wanted to update you guys. Wanted to update you guys on how we're doing. We are stable at this moment. I've got people hired. I've been working on the wage scale. When I came in, there were people that were still at $7.35 an hour. Now, this is a group of people who have mostly been there for five years or more. And when I say or more, sometimes that's 10 or 15 years of dedicating their lives at poor wages to the elderly in our communities. I've never seen a group of people that are so dedicated and so feisty to make sure that they help out the people that we serve. And that is butternut, that's glidden, that's melon, that's, that's the people from Sanborn that are, that are off a little bit now, and that's Ashland. Every single one of those people are dedicated to this, to making sure that our elderly eat and get to their appointments and that they're checked on every day. And I'm not here to ask for any more money. When I come in, I will have something costed out because we are the aging unit for the county and we do provide services that are state mandated. What I'm here to do is to ask you guys all to think about the people that are in your community that may be able to help. We still need volunteers for backups. We, we actually need to have some kind of sustainable reserve and I'm putting a plan into place for that. So, and what that will do is, as we budget our money, we will, the, the goal is to have a pool of money that we can pull from that is beyond what the county gives us, beyond what some of the grant funds are, to make sure that we can fundraise and give people living wages. Because these people give heart every day. Every day, every minute. Somebody doesn't come in or doesn't open their door for a meal, they are worried about them. And we do the calling and, and we've had to call the police sometimes. But the people that are giving these services give all of themselves. They're at the point of burnt out. I don't blame them for being quite, quite anxious when a new director came in to try to help. So, I ask you guys to think about the circles of people that you run in. See if there's someone that may volunteer to help us out, to continue. And also to think about people who may be able to help. Because you're all on my call list. I will, I will be calling you and saying, hey, is there somebody you think that could, could help us? And whether it's $5 or $20 or even something more generous. Every little bit helps. And every little bit makes sure that the people that come in for maybe their one meal a, a day or one meal a week, if that's all they can make it. That they're diabetes, their pills are made sure that they take it with a meal and that they're safe. Because we should be working for those that are the least of us and have the least access. So, I thank you.
I have a question.
Microphones, please.
Anyone else for public comments? Anyone else want to comment? Anyone else want to comment? Yes, go ahead.
Microphones, please.
Lieutenant Levasser from the Ashland County Jail. I did send an email regarding number seven subsection F regarding the approval of transferring funds from the sheriff's department to the general fund. Just stating that it was to be put into the inmate wellness account. And I was assured that that is how, how it is supposed to be read. I just wanted to double check and make sure that's how it's actually supposed to be. Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment? Hearing none will close the public comment period. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 11th meeting. Bill?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bill Metzinger, seconded by Ron Zinder. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Patrick Lynn of Carlson Detman Consulting regarding wage compensation study. Do we have them online?
Yeah, Patrick is online. I've made him co-host, so if he wants to share a presentation. Yeah, he is our consultant for Carlson Detman, who's doing our wage comp study. He's here today to give the county board a brief overview of what the study, what the process looks like and to answer any questions the board may have.
Morning, everybody. Maybe just a quick introduction, especially since I'll be the one working primarily on the project. It will be helpful. Um, I, one, I wish I could be up there today. Travel just right now is a little bit difficult. This is our busy time of year and trying to tackle more than one thing at one time. It seems to be a little bit difficult. But by way of introduction, I've been with Carlson Detman approaching nine years now. And prior to that, I spent 19 years in county government in Wisconsin, working for, for three different counties, either in an administrative capacity or human resources. I started my career in Marquette County back in the mid 90s, worked for a few years there, worked for a few years in Sauk County, and then worked for 13 years in Calumet County before I jumped over to the consulting side of things. I think the reason why sometimes that's helpful is that, one, we do a lot of work in the public sector. And we like to say that we think we know a lot about county government, but we oftentimes don't know a lot about our individual client counties in terms of how they operate, how they're structured, those sorts of things. And so, a lot that's going to happen with this project is us figuring out how those jobs interrelate with one another and then ultimately building you a pay structure. And we'll have the opportunity to go through this in greater detail or some of these points in greater details. We have your information collected a few months from now. But I just want to kind of outline some of the things that we're dealing with, some of the things that we'll need to look at. But I also want to frame a few of the questions that we're going to pose to you as we come closer to the end of this process. And I had the opportunity to meet with your department heads, if it wasn't last, because the week before, I apologize, my, my days are running together here. But we, we walked the department heads through the expectations of the study. I promise you, if there's any department heads listening this morning, it's going to be a lot shorter than it was at the department head meeting. But we do want to make certain that we are providing as much information as possible in terms of what's going on. And I think the best place to start is to talk about what this process is and what the process is not. I think the first thing is, we're looking at the jobs as it relates to job content. We're not looking at, you know, individual employees in terms of their characteristics or work habits. Again, we look at the individual jobs. We're looking at the benchmarks of your, the marketplace. We can talk about what benchmarks mean a little bit further down the road. But the other part is that we're going to help redesign the county's pay structure in accordance kind of with what you feel is, is appropriate. But I think more importantly, what the process is not, is, you know, one, we're not doing an analysis of how many positions you should have. Are you overstaffed, understaffed? You know, we see, you know, everything in all shapes and sizes. We just presume that based for this process that you are structured as you should be. It's not a performance review of any particular employee or department. That's probably the one thing that comes up most frequently. This employee is great, this department is great, this employee is terrible, this department's terrible. I hope that doesn't, those last two don't occur in your organization. But we're looking at the facts related to the jobs and so we can assess those properly. And the other thing, and I think especially, it's, it's really true in today's world, is that it's not an opportunity to cut wages. I think sometimes people have the anxiety of, you know, well, if I'm paid over market, what's going to happen to me? You know, our recommendation has been and will always be that if somebody is overpaid as it relates to their market and then to their pay grade, that their wages would be frozen, but they won't be cut. Now, realistically speaking, in today's marketplace, we find very few classifications that are overpaid. It still happens. But, but again, I think, you know, trying to outline what the process entails and what it doesn't is probably a good way to kind of kick this off. And the other thing that we deal with, and I dropped in a couple of slides this morning, so I wanted to make a couple of points here that I think are crucial to what we're dealing with in some, in terms of some of those workforce challenges. You know, the first thing, I think, a little bit of this is, you know, fairly obvious in terms of what we're seeing in the marketplace, but we're seeing challenges with the labor supply. You know, whether it is the baby boomers exit, exiting the workforce, generation X, getting ready to be the next wave of retirements that we're going to start to see in the public sector, as well as issues with population growth and so on and so forth. We're also seeing some changes in the workplace. And I think we've seen those probably for the last decade or so in terms of the changing generations in the workforce. And some of those things that are, that happen as it relates to, to the demographics of, of our employment situations. And probably the one that is most obvious in today's world is, is the wage pressures. Jobs that were $12, $13, $14 an hour in the private sector today, um, three, four years ago, are $18, $19, $20 or more dollars per hour in today's world. And we're just seeing those wages climb. And as much as I would like to say that there's an end in sight, you know, we don't see an end in sight immediately in terms of some of those, those changes. And, and as we kind of keep our pulse on the, the marketplace, you know, I, I think that's a growing concern across the country. And I would say maybe even globally, but especially across the country, you know, whether it's higher starting rates or having to respond to competing offers, those sorts of things. And we're still dealing with some of those after effects of the pandemic, you know, the, the notion of remote work. And it's really hard in today's world to, to get any number of, unless it is truly a face-to-face type of job, that there are many departments, organizations, companies who have said, yes, the pandemic proved to us that we can work remotely. And, and so, we're going to embrace it wholeheartedly. And I wouldn't say daily, but at least on a weekly basis, I can see job offers coming through, not job offers, but job announcements coming through where I could work in Texas, I could work in California, and maybe show up once a quarter, once a year, or whatever it might be. But I think that's going to pose a challenge to a lot of our public sector employers, where so much of the work is face-to-face when people do have remote possibilities before them. And then, I think the other challenge we're seeing, I'll just touch on a couple of these, you know, the public sector has transparency built in spades in many cases, but we're beginning to see more and more conversation regarding pay equity. Or I want to have, you know, I want to have a career or a job that has purpose and meaning. And my only editorial on this particular one is, I think the public sector in general doesn't always do a good job of outlining the purpose and meaning of so many of the jobs. You know, we ask a lot of our employees in the public sector to do very difficult things, sometimes thankless tasks. But the, the public sector is also very, very rich in purpose and meaning in terms of its jobs. And, and I think, again, we owe it to ourselves who are employees and to the public to perhaps trumpet that a little bit more in our recruitment and retention efforts. I just want to kind of quick talk about this, this notion of the competitive labor markets and looks like a erratic EKG, if you look at this, and probably, it's probably a good description of the labor market in, in recent times. But the blue line is simply the number of voluntary quits. I'll just focus on the blue and the red right now. People who are quitting their jobs, and you can see in the pandemic, you know, that people who are being laid off or discharged, there was a one or two month span where it just absolutely spiked. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, we would have to stack at least one more, if not two more graphs on top of this, just to get to the peak of this, this number back in March and April of 2020. But that subsided. But the concern is, even before the pandemic, you can see that the number of voluntary quits was significantly outpacing the layoffs. And the layoffs and discharges were pretty stable while this was growing. And then, after the pandemic, I mean, and it's as clear as day that the quits have spiked, which is why we hear the term the great resignation. And the layoffs have, have bottomed out a little bit. In fact, we're approaching more and more full employment. I think about 3%, 3.5% is the statistic that economists look at. The reason why we focus so much attention on this, this particular graph is that as more and more people quit, as opposed to being laid off, it puts greater pressure on the wage market. You know, wages certainly aren't the only issue why employees quit a job, but it's oftentimes trumpeted as the, the first or the primary reason in many cases. And even, even if it's not the reason why people are quitting, replacing those employees who are quitting oftentimes results in a wage conversation. So, again, we're seeing wage pressure being placed. And although this is national level data, the Midwest and Wisconsin level data is following a very, very similar pattern. The other one that I think you probably hear quite a bit about is this, the Consumer Price Index. And, you know, depending on which measure, you can talk about the CPIW, CPIU, they both track relatively close to one another. I just put the CPIU up here for purposes of illustration that, you know, in the last couple of months, you know, we, we've begun to see it eclipse 7.5%. And, you know, I, I would never bet that there aren't any board members or departments who were around in the 1980s. But we haven't seen inflation at this level since the 1980s. And, and, and the reason why I think that's important is, I think I'm finding many of my public sector clients, and actually even our, our private sector clients on the other side of our business, who are not quite certain how to respond. And, you know, in, in the public sector, especially in Wisconsin, when this occurred back in the 1980s, it wasn't done with the backdrop of, of levy limits placed upon counties. And so, now, you know, when an organization, when a county or a city has, you know, the amount of their levy being restricted by the amount of that new construction, and even though I'm not advocating for higher taxes by any stretch of the imagination, that's at least one tool in this sort of a conversation. But trying to address this, you know, as we've seen, you know, the prices increase and as the employees look at it. I had several clients ask me at the end of last year, well, now that the CPI is, I think it was like 5.8, I'll just use 5.8. If it's a wrong number, I'll, I'll be corrected. But what should we do? Should we offer a 5.8% wage increase? And my response at that time and still is, is that one year of a high CPI spike doesn't require immediate attention. Over two years, now all of a sudden, we start seeing a trend. And so, I think we need to see, you know, more and more what's unfolding. But this is just yet another cost as a public sector organization that you're going to see continue to increase, you know, whether it's asphalt or trucks or papers or pens or, or the cost of service contracts, you know, that we're seeing prices, you know, spike like we haven't seen in quite a while. So, it's kind of the backdrop or in, not really the warm fuzzy feeling that I was hoping to kind of start this presentation off with, but it's also the reality in, in which we're living. But in terms of just a general overview, in terms of how we approach things, you know, we approach this, the compensation as, as one leg of a three-legged stool. You know, being compensation benefits and then kind of a, a larger concept called the employee experience, you know, employee engagement, performance management, talent development, culture, you know, certainly fits under that umbrella. The other two are certainly important. And I'm not going to try to, you know, diminish the importance of those two, because I think that they're equally important. But the primary focus of this study is on employee compensation related to internal equity, external competitiveness, and the systems we use to get there. And I'll talk about that as we, you know, move along here. But the, the four questions, and, and this is where, you know, as I talk with you as a board of supervisors, these are the four main questions. I mean, then there's probably dozens, if not hundreds of other questions that get asked and answered by us or, or by you during the course of, of this analysis and study. But the first one being, who are we comparing to? And that's the one, and when I get to that slide in a few minutes here, I'm going to pause and, and ask for, for any feedback. And I'll explain it in a little bit more detail in terms of what it is I'm asking for. But that, this is the only question that's a front end of a project question, because we need to know what data we need to collect in the marketplace in order to, to figure out, you know, how competitive you are or aren't. And, and again, that remains to be seen. The, the final three questions, actually, the next two questions I think are more questions. The fourth one is more of a strategic and financial exercise. But the, the second question being, where do you want to be in that marketplace? You know, and, and on this slide, if we talk about lead, meet, or lag the market, you know, and it's certainly not as easy as, as just kind of putting three words on, on a slide. But, you know, that question used to be, I would say, more on autopilot. And, and we'll, again, we'll talk about this a little bit deeper into this presentation. But that's a big question. Where do you want to be in that marketplace? How do you want to deliver pay? You know, what type of a structure design is there? Is it going to be performance-based? If the answer coming from you is, yes, that's what we want is performance-based pay, there are some additional questions that should really flow from that to make certain that you are well-equipped to, to truly engage in performance-based pay. Or a step structure, which is the more tried and true plan out there in the public sector or some combination of those. And then, where the rubber hits the road is this notion of, of plan implementation. What's the initial cost? What's it going to cost us in the future? And, you know, what exceptions do we need to make within the implementation to make certain that certain positions are being treated equitably? So, from that standpoint, and I've talked about these concepts a little bit already, but the first thing we're going to look at is, how do jobs compare or relate to one another inside the organization? You know, do we have the, the structure or the hierarchy evaluated correctly to then kind of help build a pay structure that makes sense to your departments, to the board, but it's based on job documentation? So, as we speak, I believe the employees are engaged in completing the job documentation for us to ultimately review and evaluate. We'll also be collecting market data to make certain that we're matching your jobs to the, to the most reliable set of data possible, including where applicable, private sector data to make certain that you are, are truly competitive. We marry those two things, the internal and the external, using a consistent methodology. And when I, when I say that, you know, the results vary from client to client. There's different things that get, that they can get plugged in and out of, of the equations. But the way we approach those things really doesn't change. And, and that's good. I mean, we, we shouldn't have different standards or different approaches for, for every single project. We should have a consistent methodology. And that last one, I already alluded to, you know, in terms of transparency, that the public sector, it's really hard not to be transparent, that, you know, just even this presentation being done in an open session of the board, as we navigate our way through the process, the decisions we made, you know, by the, the board, you know, presumably in, in open session. And so, for us, I'm not going to go through this in every single detail, but, you know, we're at the front end of the process, collecting the job documentation and market data. And we have some work to do on evaluating those jobs. And about halfway through the process is when we come back and we will meet with the department heads to, to make certain that we're getting the questions asked and answered to help us get the best evaluation for that job, but also to begin to understand some of the challenges that, that you're faced with. And then, once we have the opportunity to kind of take all those comments and, and inputs into consideration, then we come back to the board. And I would say about two-thirds of the way through the process, because we need to have all this other work done before we can even tell you where you stand in the marketplace, is coming back and saying, okay, here's what we see, here's what we think you might want to do, and do you agree or disagree? If you agree, that's fantastic. Then, you know, the, the process can, you know, roll down here, a little, roll downhill a little bit more quickly. If there's some things that we need to tweak, you know, we just make certain that we're, we fine tune as appropriate to, to make certain that we're giving you that final product that you're seeking. And then, at, after everything is said and done, it's an optional piece of the pro- It's an optional piece of the pro- process. Um, I will tell you that most public sector organizations engage in it, which is what we call an appeals process that. If there's um the need to correct errors or or review the placement of a particular grade. Um, and the question I often get asked, I'll just ask and answer my own questions here until you have the opportunity to ask is that. You know, why are the appeals after the the final report is given? And it's kind of the, I would equate it to a court system that you can't appeal a decision of the courts. Until a final adjudication has been made. And the same thing applies here that you, there's really nothing to appeal. Until some level of final decision has been made, but we we try to put up some safeguards to make certain that that doesn't go off the rails and and I'll touch on that at the end here. I alluded to the fact that we'd be evaluating each and every one of the jobs. And again, as we come back. Um, I'll, I'll I'll talk about this in in greater detail further into the process. What we're looking at is basically five factors and each of those factors has sub factors. So e- eleven things in total. If, and that's really where the work occurs is in those sub factors, but the main headers. What are the problems and thinking challenges that a particular job is given on a regular basis? And looking at that in some detail. And then we dig into the the decision making that. You know, the the employee or the classification is empowered to engage in. What role do they have in the decision making? What's the impact on the organization in 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 doing so? At third level, um, the interactions and communications. Who are they talking to inside, outside the organization? And what's the impact on on the flow of in information, um, data and the like? You know, those those first three tend to flow from one another in terms of more of a logical conversation than the than the last two. Also important, but the, you know, the the then the work environment being, what are the types of things that can hurt an employee and what are the physical elements of the job? And knowing all of the above, you know, what's the formal education experience required um to fill? To fill that role. And again, we that this is where. Um, I think it's important to note, this is why we, and we're not focusing on the individual employees. Um, because people might land in their jobs for different reasons, but. Either based on our professional observation, based on the requirements of the county. If you were filling the job tomorrow, what would you be looking for? And and so that's usually the standard we look at. And and once we have all of that. Then we can really begin to do a lot of work as relates to bringing. You know, the internal hierarchy alongside the external marketplace for for consideration. And and speaking of the external marketplace. You know, we we want, you know, that's that first question we talked about, you know, we we want to identify. Who it is we're we're comparing to. And and there's two schools of thought, and I think both are applicable in in many, if not all of our projects. Which is first one is the comparable, who is like us. And I would say this is the more traditional collective bargaining approach. Where, you know, perhaps an arbitrator at some point, you know, said that here are the. You know, three, four, five counties who are like you for purposes of comparison. But truth be told, you kind of do that yourself, you know, whether it is. You know, hey, here's who like us, we're going to join into a consortium with with these particular organizations. Or they happen to be nearby and and you just try to 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 work with or compare yourselves to one another. And so that comparable marketplace certainly is valuable for setting it up, for setting up a pay structure. But it's also important to look at who are you competing with? You know, and it's always that who's trying to take our talent, but also who are we trying to take talent from? And that might be big or small, you know, it is not always who is like us. Um, that is, you know, a. His purposes of comparison, you know, but it's also the public versus private. And so again, we we believe there's there's going to be some crossover, um, so we can get a more diverse pool. And so our initial pass through, you know, kind of looking at this is. You know, one, I we feel very strongly that, you know, only two or three or four comparable organizations. Probably in the long run does the organization at the service, that it's too easy for one. Organization to drag a pay plan up or down or an individual rate of pay for a particular job. And so having a better view of the marketplace, you know, and in this case, I would say more is definitely better. And so our initial recommendation is to take a pretty decent snapshot of northern. Slightly northwestern, even though we go a little bit east here, Wisconsin. Um, a a decent, you know, cross section. Um, it doesn't, you know, we we avoid Marathon County, the Wood, the Portage, the O'Clare Counties. Um, we're not opposed to it, um, but I also want to kind of put this out there in front of you. So I guess this is the point where I alluded to before. That was going to pause. And this is an important one. I'm not looking for county board approval um at this point. But at the same time, if there are elements here that that strike anybody as being, for lack of a better term, offensive. Whether it is this, uh, an organization should be included or excluded from the mix, now is probably the best time to hear it. Any, any input?
Fair to have Oneida County. I'm not sure it would be fair to have Oneida County, Vilas County and Sawyer County in with this grouping. In that, you know, they have quite a different. Uh, you know, ability to generate income through property taxes with their waterfront properties and things. And I I think even though it's not in the north, we should compare some that are more similarly situated to us like Adams County. Which is one of the poorer counties next to us. In the state and maybe another one besides Adams, but. You know, if we're going to look at true comparables, I don't, I don't think. That the the three I mentioned and maybe a couple more, if we looked at them, really should be in with this grouping.
You'd probably make a similar ar- argument about Bayfield, your neighbor to the east, but I I guess this comes down to the question of. The comparable versus competitive. You know, I and as I'm I'm looking over to my left here, a map of Wisconsin, um, that. You know, Oneida cert- Oneida and Vilas, you know, certainly being far enough away, you know, Sawyer being right in your backyard. Um, so, you know, the question would be, and here's what I would advise you, that. I don't have an issue, you know, including Adams County in the mix. And if you're going to include Adams, you know, you might want to consider Juneau. If you're going to consider Juneau, you might want to consider, you know, you can keep going on that list. Um, but my my point is that. We're still, in fact, we we probably have the data for the three that you just mentioned that this should be included in. I don't know that we have Adams, but it's not hard to to get that information. That I think it's worth a look to see in terms of how those respective organizations are or aren't. Um, impacting your your compensation. You know, I can tell you just based on on personal experience. You know, that that Sawyer has had difficult, has had challenges in in keeping up with this compensation structure. Um, I can tell you that we are, in fact, we're at the same stage with Vilas County. In fact, you're slightly ahead of Vilas County, but we're. We're initiating a compensation study with them as well. And and similar conversations will certainly occur with their board, but my my advice to you is. I I I have it written down here in terms of of your concerns related to the Sawyer, Vilas, Oneida. Like I said, I think Bayfield is probably similar in terms of statistics. I I've run a lot of those numbers recently for a couple of projects. That. Let's collect it. Let's see how it's impacting the organization and 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 see where it lands. And, you know, quite frequently, in fact, I just did this for, um. Taylor County a a month, month and a half ago. To show them, you know, in terms of, and and for them, their particular concern was, well, what impact are O'Clair Marathon Wooden Portage having on our pay structure? And it was very negligible. Now, I can't say that will be the same story for you, but I'm just saying that sometimes it's helpful to see. How those organizations are or are not impacting the the recommended pay structure. Does that sound like an acceptable approach?
Oh, so I just, I just wonder the um. Why Douglas County is in the comparable counties because. It's, I mean, Douglas County has a really, really different economic base. So that would be one, one question that I would put out there. And and maybe it's because of the, you know, the the draw that people might get to Douglas County. Um, also Florence County on the border of um Michigan. Uh. Just, just a consideration to put that in the mix as far as our comparables. Thanks.
Yeah, so I can answer both of those. Florence, I mean, there there had to be a cutoff at some point. I mean, in the, you know, the question, if we do Florence, then you should be, should you be doing Marinette? And and again, I can tell you for Vilas, you know, the Vilas County comparables are shifting just a little bit more to the east, so we'll be collecting that same data. But the your intuition regarding Douglas is exactly correct. I mean, it's that question of. Where are those magnets? If I were to be, you know, an hour or two south, you know, we're going to be having the same conversation regarding O'Clair and Marathon Counties in terms of the draw. And going back to that notion, in fact, I'm just going to back up here, you know, that comparable, who's like you. Versus competitive, who's competing with you, who who are you trying to avoid? And and the thing I like about a larger pool such as this. Is that a Douglas, or if you were, even if you were to say, let's include Douglas and Marathon, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that if you were to say that. They're not dominating the conversation in terms of a wage structure. Now, if I were to come to you and say, let's just look at Douglas, Bayfield, Iron, Sawyer Price, you know, just a a very limited pool. Then a Douglas is absolutely going to influence the pay structure at for, you know. Could potentially adversely because it's a, it's it's one number amongst a small grouping here. By having, you know, ten to fifteen comparable employers. You get the influence, you get the view of the world in terms of how it's impacting in it and allows that. So I I I do understand and I have the list of, so I have the. Potential removes right now of Sawyer, Vilas, Oneida, Douglas, and then the. And I will absolutely include Adams and and Florence, and I'll probably toss. Um, O'Connell and Marinette into the mix as well, just just for the sake of looking, getting a good snapshot of northern Wisconsin. As we look at, and I will say, as you look at O'Connell, they've got then the pressure of. Competing with the Outagamian Brown Counties of the world as it as you get closer and closer to the to the Fox Valley region.
Right, Pat.
We were given a a green book that has data by county. Um, they come out with a new edition of that every year. I think we all have our impressions of which ones we're most comparable to, but given that there's a lot of data on um. Each county, and that could be the property taxes, um, it could be the housing costs, it could be the forestry revenue. Um, it could be our level of net new construction. We all know where we stand on that, which is the bottom end. I believe we're the second lowest in terms of median um household income. We have a twenty percent poverty rate. So there's a bunch of data. And I think we should look at the data from these different counties, decide which of those metrics are important to us. And by looking at that data and the metrics that we decide are most relevant to this. From that, select the counties that we're going to use as comparables, because one of the questions we're going to wrestle with, you know, when this is all done is. What percent of the comparables can we pay our employees? If we include more counties where they're better able to compensate their employees. That number, you know, in the wage study is going to be a higher number. But if we decide, you know, that we can't, you know, pay to that level, you know, we're going to have to decide what percent we can pay. On the other hand, if we narrow it to counties that economically are closer to what we are. Then I would presume that we're going to pay a higher percent of those comparables there. So we we have to wrestle with both of those, but I think this data, since the data exists. Would be really good for us to look at, because I know we're going to get questions, not just among ourselves, but, you know, employees and and people in this county who are going to be asked to pay for this. Um, you know, the wages, um, is that we then have good data to go by that we can explain and justify the decision that we made. On comparable. So given there's data, I would love to look at the data.
Go ahead, Laura.
Um, Patrick, my thought is, is that the group that you've got up there is a pretty good one. Those are the most likely, if somebody is going to stay here, that they may go to those counties and and those are our competitors. I mean, we could, besides Milwaukee, Madison, Marathon County, Portage and stuff, we the. Those ones are kind of our outliers. Douglas County is a little bit of a outlier in there, but people will drive there for jobs. So. Having all of that and when we get down to brass tacks. You know, throwing out the top, throwing out the bottom and looking at those mid numbers is what's going to provide us with the best data to get this done.
I think what I'll say in in some of the coming slides here will will gravitate right towards what you were just describing.
Bill.
Um, are you taking cities into consideration as far as these comparable salaries?
They would have to be a, when I say a city of size, I would say, you know, our threshold is usually um five thousand or more in the in that mix. And I would say. Um, this probably within a sixty to seventy-five mile radius is usually what we would would apply when we're looking at city data.
Anyone else want to comment? Anyone else want to comment?
This is helpful. This isn't an easy answer, or this is not an easy question to answer. I understand that has high stakes in terms of what what you're looking at here. Um, and and that's why we try to look at a broader cross section of the marketplace and not just, like I said, just a couple of counties. I I think you. As an organization, want to have the most comfort level that you're paying competitively. Not too high, not too low, um, and and we'll talk about what that means in just a few moments.
Go ahead, Matt.
I guess the only question I would have in in regard to. Not necessarily this block of counties, but what Minnesota really does for us as well. We know that we compete with them, especially for therapists and stuff. Um, based on what they have the ability to pay and I don't know, and I I guess I'm just throwing it out there as far as a. How do we deal with that? Because we definitely lose employees in Minnesota.
Yeah, I'm guessing when you say competing, well, either you're competing with the Duluth area or you're competing with the Twin Cities. There's not much in between, and I'm guessing that. For me to design a pay structure around the Twin Cities is not a tenable solution. Um, yeah, but, you know, in terms of the Duluth area, you know, you know, I, that's why we. You know, we can certainly go into, you know, the 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 northern counties. I would argue that the the likes of Douglas Burnett. Um, and even Polk, you know, included in this mix. They've had to deal with that as relates from a competitive balance. So you at least get that influence. If you want to dip your toe in Minnesota, we can certainly do so. Um, but then the question would be if if we're tossing, and I'm not saying you are, I'm just going, for the sake of argument, if you're tossing Douglas out. As as a comparable organization, then you would probably have to, you know, hold the same logical extension for for the Minnesota dynamics.
I I guess just to follow up on that a little bit, I I think indirectly it is some of the Twin Cities, because some of the counties you have up there, that group. Dunn County, what have you, they're definitely competing with Minnesota, the Twin Cities. And if we're using them as comparables and compatibles, um, you know, how do we factor that in or out?
You know, I, and and I I will just say regarding Dunn County, because we just finished a a project for them. Is that it's because of the, and it's really the hills on the on the western side of Monominee that they, it's not as big of an influence as as one would think. You know, it's when you get over to the St. Croix Pierce Counties and and and, you know, that those borders where it's really much more influential. But I thought the same thing. I thought exactly the same thing, that, you know, we're going to have to dip our toe into the Twin Cities marketplace, you know, Woodbury and Stillwater and the like, and. Their response was that is, I mean, it's a concern, it's always a concern, but. Um, it's not as big of an influence perhaps as as one would think when it comes to Dunn County.
Any more discussion? Here, Enon. Uh, thank you for your presentation.
Well, actually, I I got a lawyers to go here. I I. I'm sorry, I I can, I can quit now.
He just tried to shut you off.
And I'm happy to shut up too. I just, I want, this is the one area where this is the one decision that we needed some guidance on to start this project, that that this is important. Um, but I will go a little bit more quickly now, just because these these questions will be asked and answered in the future. You know, but when we talk about using the data. You know, we do sometimes look at it, you know, from a, you know, from a department head level, you know, maybe you're looking a little bit more regionally. In in some cases, we might need to. I don't, I don't know that's necessary. Where you tend to look more locally for for some of the hourly jobs. And and again. Since we're staying in pretty much northern Wisconsin, I don't know that it's necessary um to to break it out that way, but that's sometimes the way we have to view the world. This question of, and in fact, this was a, this is alluding to the, you know, one thing that we talked about, and. World at Work, which is our professional association for for compensation professionals. You know, they do a survey every year or so, talking about, you know, what are some of those pay practices? And and for this purpose. You know, the overwhelming majority of organizations try to build their pay structure. Around the fiftieth percentile, you know, half pay more, half pay less. And, you know, certainly some in in, you know, what happens for a goal versus what happens in practice, sometimes is a little bit different. But the question we're faced with quite frequently is in the current marketplace, is the f- fiftieth percentile enough? Now, what I will tell you is for your organization, I don't know the answer to that question, and I won't until we get quite a ways. Now, what I will tell you is for your organization, I don't know the answer to that question, and I won't until we get quite a ways in. Some organizations, even getting to the median, you know, where where you're kind of nestled right in the middle of that marketplace, is a heavy lift. And in those cases, you know, the fiftieth percentile is probably enough or more than enough. In fact, I had a county just a couple of years ago where. Getting to the fiftieth percentile was a huge stretch, and so they made a decision to pay a little bit less than that. Now, your your neighbor to the to the west, you know, made the decision to pay a little bit more than the fiftieth percentile. To continue to be in a competitive position. So it varies from client to client, and it's based on the philosophy. But again, that's. This is the question that used to be on autopilot, where we're just going to build it on the fiftieth percentile. It's just not that easy anymore as as the market continues to change. I would also expect you as as guardians of the finances to talk about what about benefits, you know, what about the value of the pension? What about the value of our time off or our insurance? And those are great. And and the reality is with the four main buckets. You really have control over two. Insurance and time off. The mandatory, the FICA taxes, workers' comp, those are set by. Statute statute or or, you know, other means, the retirement, you're told what the contribution is going to be, and it's a fifty fifty split in most cases. But the reality is, you know, the wages take up the biggest piece of the pie. And there's really only two options. You know, I'll go from the bottom up. You can make the pie bigger, which really isn't an option in the public sector. You know, that, you know, as we see that, yes, then the question becomes, how do we reslice that pie? If we're offering more in benefits, how do we balance it off on the? Or offering more in wages? How do we balance it off on the benefit side of things? And so there's always that balancing act, but. But again, I think those, that's one of the things that I would fully expect some level of conversation as we work our way through this. In terms of structure, and I I won't talk about this in too much detail, except there's a lot of pieces that go into kind of building that pay philosophy. Including how are you going to deliver pay? And we'll revisit this in in a few months here. But some of those things to consider, how are employees going to move? You know, do you have situations where compression in that almost all, not always, but. Frequently occurs in in the public safety professions. You know, if I was working with a city, it's going to be police and fire. With counties, it's usually sheriff's departments where, you know, do we have to look at compression from? From management to those who are being supervised. How many structures? In most cases, it's one. So again, there's some considerations there. The delivery of pay. You know, single rates, you know, are highly inadvisable and required. It puts a lot of pressure on market competitiveness. Step based models are a little bit more comfortable. But they certainly have their pitfalls, and we'll talk about those, you know, further down the road. And as I alluded to before, if if the board's desires to go on that road of performance based pay. It's a very laudable approach, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. And a lot of organizational maturity that needs to be in place before it can really successfully be pulled off. And so we'll we'll want to have those conversations if that's what you're seeking. It's this forced fourth question that really kind of causes us some pause and sometimes causes some frustrations, which is. You know, it's always, it's always money. I mean, let's just be realistic here, that when we're dealing with these sorts of things. You know, what are the? Levy limits and if net new constructions at one percent, that's probably, especially this coming year. That's probably gobbled up already by fuel cost. I mean, I have no doubt that that's probably a major consideration. But then it's that balancing act between. You know, I should have learned this in the first part of my career, but I absolutely learned this when I joined the consulting world, which is. I have zero control over happiness. I I like it when people are happy. I hope people are happy. But I'm really focused on what's fair. And you know, our encouragement, you know, from the board is, you know, in terms of. Focusing less on trying to make everybody happy and focus more on what's fair to the employees and fair overall, as opposed to, like I said, that that notion of individual happiness. And we could walk through, again, at a later time, some of those challenges, and that's why we provide several options for implementation. That sometimes, you know, someone looks at and says, well, I'm not getting a very large increase at implementation. But I have a lot more opportunity further down the road. So that's something we're contending with. It's almost never possible to take everyone's years of service into full consideration. And again, we can, as we met with the department heads, I shared an example, I can share an example down the road, or actually your real, your information. That. You know, trying to take care of, you know, full length of service will become incredibly expensive if we try to do so, and that's usually the roadblock. And I just note that, you know. Every once in a while, I'll hear somebody say that, well, we'll just make a special exception for this department. And my only thing is that it's a very slippery slope. And in my second bullet point there, it can cause that chain reaction. In fact, as I was. Sitting here waiting my turn, I got an email from a county, you know, that was implementing right now, and. A department wanted an exception, and right behind it was another department said, well, if you're going to grant that department this, then you need to do the same. So this is. This is probably where the work really begins on your end, and we hand the project over to you. For implementation purposes, that it requires some very thoughtful. Planning to be able to afford what's what's being recommended. I talked about the appeals process before. I'm just going to skim this through this pretty quickly. That we're looking at the grade placement, you know, kind of that dotting our i's, crossing our t's. I want to talk more about what it's not, especially as I'm talking to you. And and Dan, you have this presentation, I'll send you the revised one with the new slides in here. So you can share it with the board. That. The policy decisions made by the board have to remain intact. And when I say. Policy decisions, you know, the first one being what is? The the marketplace, and we just got done talking about, we want to include this, we don't want to include that. At some point, we'll come to a final determination on what that actually looks like. But once you make that decision, you can't have a department come in or employee come in and say, well, yeah, you included these ten, I want to include my ten. Into the mix. That that's a policy decision. The implementation strategy is a policy decision, and so. Making certain and giving you the comfort level that when we look at appeals, we want to make certain that we get the jobs placed appropriately. But we're not completely pulling the rug out from underneath you as it relates to undermining the policy decisions that were made. So again, there's a very delicate balancing act in in the appeals process as as well. And so in closing for us, in in order for us to. Give you something that we can stand behind, it's got to be equitable, it's got to be fair. And and so, you know, has that hierarchy been established? You know, you certainly, you know, need to be competitive. Now, how competitive and competitive with whom is is the operational question? That we want to have some level of, you know, supporting employees, whether it's performance based. Or if you have a system in place, if the duties of a job change, that you can reclassify them appropriately without having to just completely guess. And then the next two that. Can the initial implementation be afforded? And and I separate these out because I I would argue, I. I think many of us can probably look at and say. In that first year, we can figure out how to afford the initial implementation. We can dig through the seat cushions, you know. Pull some change out, you know, maybe on on bury a couple of cans in the backyard filled with cash that we've buried over the years, whatever it might be. But it's that sustainability that as people move through that structure, how do we afford it year after year after year? As people move through that structure. As you know, you have to adjust the structure from time to time to make certain you're keeping pace with the marketplace. That's really where the consideration comes in, and that's really kind of where the long term planning is important. And knowing all those things, and if you have a comfort level with all of them, hopefully that you have something that you can adopt and put in place. So as I finish here. Our goal is, you know, sitting here, March and April, trying to get the employee job documentation back in our hands. So we think we can begin on analyzing them. And, you know, as we wind down the summer months, you know, hopefully having the information in place. You know, hopefully, as we get closer to the end of July, early August, we can at least give you. A functional number to work from from a budget standpoint. We may not have a final number. But at least something that you can work from and start making some planning decisions based on. But as you, you know, certainly wind up your budget process in earnest, you know, in the in the later summer months, early, early, early fall. That you you have some final numbers that you can, you know. Work with to 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 put together a pay structure and and at the same time, a budget. So I'm happy to stick on. I know you've got other things on your agenda this morning. Happy to stick on the call. With any questions. If any questions pop up after the fact, get them to Dan, he can route them to me, I can answer them. Or I, you know, I will be up there, you know, as we get through the initial decision making phase. And and maybe can even answer him at that point. So happy to do whatever you you want this morning.
Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to clarify my, when I talked about the data and throwing out the top and bottom, I'd really like to see the data on those counties put in. And then as we go through, then, you know, as we target down the place that we should be, those should be taken into consideration, but I'm just saying as an evaluation. We we know we can take out the tops and bottoms on these and work more towards that center. So I just wanted to clarify it.
And what I can say, and I I have a whole, I have slides upon slides upon slides, I can drop into a presentation and. That even as we go through the individual data for each classification. We're mindful of the extreme outliers in every case. If something is too far extreme up or down. That it's usually excluded as as a comparable for that particular job. And because we we know that we're trying to get a a measure of. What's typical in the marketplace and and not trying to keep pace with everyone else. So there are some measures we even take even before it ends up on your desk.
One of your slides had, we would have to consider short term increases versus long term increases. I'd like to, when we get to that, see if you've got some data. To help us understand, you know, which of those may be more attractive or not and why. And then how that relates to both retention, which I assume. Helps the county in the long run to be more efficient, because you're not hiring new people, and we often hire them at higher costs. And then how that short term versus long term might fit into the sustainability of these increases. It seems, and I might be wrong on this, that more of the long term incentive would help the county plan for wages. That are long term versus the more immediate that are short term. So when we get later into this, I'd like to look at those things.
Yeah, and as we work our way through, and that's ultimately, you know, what I say to every client is your politics are your politics, that oftentimes we work through a committee. That ultimately gives a recommendation to the full board. I don't know how your 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 organization works. But a lot of times at the committee level, we have a spreadsheet that we ultimately turn over to the county for implementation purposes. And in there are, you know, six or seven different options for implementation that can be configured. To take some of those factors in into consideration for the decision making process.
Are you finished with your presentation?
I'm done, I'm done. So if there's, if there's no other questions, I'm I'm good to go. Like I said, if there's any other questions occur after the fact, feel free to. Let Dan know, and I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Any more questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great day. Look forward to it.
Okay, moving along. Go to six B, Liz, Public Health Director.
Good morning. All right, so I pulled together a COVID update for you. I included kind of a recap of. Twenty twenty-one in here as well, just to kind of give a picture of where we've been throughout the past year. So. Since the start of the pandemic, we have received a total of three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight lab confirmed. Probable confirmed or probable cases of COVID nineteen. This total number does not include the suspect positive cases. Which result from home tests, and it also doesn't include obviously the cases that weren't reported to us. This total number. These suspect cases are not included in the total number related to the metrics of the recording per DHS and the CDC. The recent surge of cases from the Delta and then the Omicron variant peaked in our area mid to late January, where we had topped. We were just shy of two hundred cases in a one week period. Since then, we have had decreasing weekly case counts with the last week having just fewer than ten positive cases. There were actually eight cases in total. The current metrics per DHS continue to report us as as having a high case activity. This is an average of a two week time period. And based on the actual number of positive cases, it's based on per a one hundred thousand population count, so it takes fewer positive cases for our number to show higher initially. The CDC community transmission levels have been reduced to substantial. This again is based on the case count metrics, and that is over a one week time period. These metrics are also the metrics that continue to guide the healthcare facilities and the interventions that they have in place. And then per the new updated CDC guidance, which reflects the community impact metrics, we are currently rated as a low community impact for COVID nineteen activity. Since the start of the pandemic, we have lost a total of thirty-six of our community members related to complications from COVID nineteen. Currently, seventy-one point five percent of Ashland County residents have received at least one dose of the COVID nineteen vaccination series. Sixty-eight percent are fully vaccinated and thirty-three point two percent have received an additional or a booster dose. The Ashland County vaccination rates are higher than the overall state rates, and we have consistently had the highest or second highest rate throughout our region. For a while, we were bouncing back and forth between Bayfield County with having the highest, and currently they are just above us. So. We're number two in our region for vaccination rate. A recap of our vaccination activities. So beginning in January of twenty twenty-one, we had received our first shipment of our COVID nineteen vaccine. Mass vaccination clinics were held through the Public Health Clinic. At our Sandburn office, beginning the week of January eleventh. The clinics were held three to four times weekly, Tuesdays through Fridays from January through May. Simultaneously, mass community clinics were held at the Ashland School District Field House, and this was in partnership with Memorial Medical Center. St. Luke's Swamigan Clinic, Essentia Health Ashland, and the North Lakes Community Clinics. The frequency of the clinics decreased beginning in May as focus was then turned to the school based clinics for interested school districts. We did provide COVID nineteen vaccinations. There were two school districts accepting onsite vaccination clinics at that time, the remainder had declined. Our vaccination efforts continued into the fall with a routine schedule being offered for walking clinics through the Public Health Clinic held. Those were once every three weeks. And then our clinics were again offered to all school districts in the late fall prior to the holiday season. Four school districts did accept onsite clinics at that time. However, we actually had to cancel one due to lack of interest and participation. So in total, throughout twenty twenty-one, a total of seven thousand three hundred and forty-nine doses of COVID nineteen vaccine were provided. Through the Public Health Clinic. The community partnership of the hospital, the clinics in the school district provided. A total of two thousand nine hundred and seventy doses of Moderna. The efforts of the Public Health Clinic by ourselves provided ninety-eight doses of Johnson and Johnson. Ninety-nine doses of Moderna, three hundred and forty doses of the Pfizer. Age five to eleven year olds, which we often refer to as the Pfizer Junior. And then an additional three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine doses of Pfizer for ages twelve and above. We've continued to offer the walking clinics with fewer and fewer people coming in attendance. So due to the declining interest, at this point in time, we are currently pausing our vaccination efforts. And we will readdress, should the clinics be requested by any businesses or schools again, if anybody would be interested in. You know, clinics over the summer or whatnot. And then we'll evaluate again in the fall, depending on what the activity is, or later in the summer, if there's been increasing activity. The FDA Advisory Committee will be meeting on April sixth to this discuss future boosters. And then if any specific variant of concern would need its own vaccine. And then just one other thing to note is that Ashland County has been designated as a stop on the state thank you moving forward tour. So we are actually expecting Governor Evers and Secretary Timberlake to be stopping by and visiting us at some point in time. They're looking at potentially. The, I think it was towards the end of April or mid to late May. We don't have a set schedule just yet. But that visit is in part to the community partnerships that we've had throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. So they're stopping by just to kind of. Recognize that. We're just looking to see if we can find any events that they might be able to piggyback along with. So. Any questions for?
Liz, before I say anything, thank you for helping our county get through this pandemic. It has been a hard job, so I thank you for that. You said there was thirty-two hundred and eighty-five actual cases of the virus in our county. Uh, you said there was thirty two hundred and eight fifty eight actual cases of the virus in our county.
Yep, three thousand two hundred and fifty.
And some of those we can't count because we didn't test them. They were testing at home. Have you got an a guesstimate of really what the actual number was?
The three thousand two hundred and fifty eight are the ones that we know of for sure.
It's hard to say.
Hard to say.
Our question, this, uh, three thousand two hundred and fifty eight, the confirmed cases of COVID. How many of those were actually Ashland County residents? Do you have that breakdown or all of them? Okay.
Those were all.
So if they came from Iron County to be tested.
Their numbers would be sent to Iron County.
Okay, thank you.
Overall, um, how is Ashland County doing with the surrounding colonies? Is it pretty equal with their other colonies? Are we behind or ahead?
We've been pretty well for our areas. It's, we're generally a little bit higher in activity compared to like Iron County. Um, Sawyer County is typically a little bit higher than where we are. For whatever reason, um, but we've been. Pretty consistent as far as our neighboring counties as far as activity.
Two things. One is a question about, um, folks who got shots in iron. Be feel price, but we're asking residents, did that information come back into Eastern Nation?
Yep. All of the vaccine information is recorded into the Wisconsin Immunization Registry. So it doesn't matter where you get your shot at. It all reports back to your county presidents.
Okay. And then, and to kind of. Uh, jump on Kathy's comment. Um, I think the county board owes a big thank you to the Health Department and you. Because I personally witnessed all the information coming forward to schools and to the local communities. And I don't know that we would have made this through without that help. So I personally would like to say thank you to the Health Department and to you, you and your staff because. Um, this was a tough two years and and your department helped get us through a lot of that. So thank you from me and.
I will make sure and relay that message.
Have you ever just considered a different line of work?
No, actually, I've, I've been a nurse since two thousand five. So, um, at this point, you all are stuck with me for now.
I just, I just want to add to that, that when Liz became our county health officer, was right at the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, she, yeah, she just jumped in there. On day one.
Safer at Home was issued on March sixteenth and I was officially appointed by the board on March twenty third.
Yes, uh.
Hi, hi Liz. Thank you so much for all of your work. Um. I'm, I'm wondering if you have any information on recent overdoses that that have occurred in the community? And, um. Uh, you know, just in general, where where we're doing with overdose rates, um, in the midst of this pandemic.
Um, yeah, we've actually, so for twenty twenty one, I believe there were. Eleven confirmed overdoses. Um, there are still a couple of cases where we're waiting for additional information. Um, coming into this year so far. We're, we're waiting for information for quite a few cases. Um, it with the toxicology reports and things like that, it can actually take up to six months to receive the full report back. Um, I know there are potentially up to five suspected overdose cases already this year. So in the last year and a couple of months so far, we've seen a significant increase in the number of overdoses. As compared to we typically are. Ashland County typically has two to four overdose cases per year. Um, so and and we have seen. You know, typically it's two to four, but the years prior to the pandemic, we were seeing some increases where we were having. I, you know, I know there were like seven, the one year, eight the next year. So we did kind of pick up on the trend and related to that. We had actually, uh, written for a grant for an overdose fatality review team. Which we actually were approved for, um, our funding for that overdose fatality review started in September of twenty twenty one. So we've actually initiated the process. We had our first team training. Um, March ninth was the first team training and orientation. So we're hoping to start reviewing cases. I believe our goal is to start reviewing in May. We have to pull some additional data together before we're able to do that. But we're hoping to start review, the review process in May and then we will be able to, um, hopefully start to. Identify any trends or anything like that to start to implement community interventions.
Uh, I got one question for you, Liz, before you go. Um, do you anticipate that? This COVID thing, this COVID shots, booster shots and everything we've been getting right along. Is that going to be something that's going to be an annual event like a flu shot?
There is speculation that it will be an annual booster shot going forward. Um, I know there are a couple of fun, a couple of companies that are actually already looking at. The potential for a flu shot and COVID vaccine combo. So you could receive your flu shot and COVID booster at the same time.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for your service and all you do. Really appreciate it. Any more questions for Liz? Thank you. We'll go to number seven, the regular agenda approval of the new public health fees.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, new health, public health fees for the.
A motion by Clarence Campbell to approve.
Uh, this is Laura. I'll second that.
Seconded by Lauren Agro. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We go to seven B, authorizing county administrator to end town of Le Point police agreement.
So this item, is it new? We've dealt with this a couple of times already back in. Executive Committee, Finance Committee, I believe this board's even taken up the issue before. Uh, so this will be officially, uh, ending our agreement with La Point. Uh, currently we give them a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars a year. Uh, the plan originally was that we're going to use eighty thousand of that to give pay raises to the correction officers. And we decided, this county board decided to use ARPA money for this year. However, next year going forward, it still needs its own funding, the funding from this. From this agreement. So I would ask that the county board go ahead and approve this.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion been made by Gary Murray.
I'll second the motion. Let Marty.
You second it? Seconded by Marty Vitek. Any more discussion?
So before the budget is completed, we will discuss what, uh, if we make any changes to this. Uh, because we're just going to terminate it now and so they, they will be fully funded this year.
Correct.
And then if, if we decide to make changes, we can make that for the next budget.
Correct.
Any more questions? Are we ready to vote? We need a roll call. All those in favor of terminating the law enforcement agreement? They say aye. As opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We go to seven C, approval of emergency fire warden organization list.
And I'll second.
Made a motion to approve it. Philomena, do we have a second?
I, I make the motion to second it.
Seconded by Kathy Schutte. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of carbon credits agreement.
I'll make a motion that we enter into the agreement for, uh, selling our carbon credits with the. Vendor that's been suggested.
Do we have a second?
This is Pat. I'll second.
Motion was made by Lauren Agro, seconded by Pat Kenny. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what this all means. I, I, I guess I can read it and I can understand that this is for a forty year period. This agency that we're going to deal with for ten years.
Microphone, please.
I, I understand that it's for a forty year period. And I understand that, you know, it's for a ten year commitment to the, the, the group that's going to sell for us. What was it really mean to us? I mean, I can see where there's additional money, um, that can come in. But are we jumping the gun on this, I guess, is what I'm wondering. And, you know, it's a, it's a big commitment and I'd like to hear a little more about it before we, we vote on.
I, I would, I would like to have, uh, County Forester Chris Huffman speak on that, please. Chris, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Would, would you speak on that, please?
Sure, um, essentially, carbon credits are purchased by, um. Companies to offset their carbon footprint and to be able to present themselves to their consumers as being carbon neutral. This gives us an opportunity to, uh, generate a passive revenue stream. On the forest management that we do on the county forest. Um, it doesn't change our operations at all. It adds a little bit of monitoring and reconnaissance work that we have to do on an annual basis. So that we can verify the amount of carbon that we're growing and sequestering on the landscape. Uh, but it doesn't change our day to day operations. It doesn't change our timber sale program. Um, it doesn't change our timber revenue. Um, it's simply being paid for the trees that we're growing on an annual basis. Um, it did, it is. It is kind of a unique market, um, to buying and selling of carbon credits is, uh. Is new to the forest industry. Uh, it started about ten years ago. Um, but when it originally started, there were no companies like Blue Source or Finite or NCX. That did the legwork for property owners. Now those companies have found a niche to do the legwork and interface between, uh, the land managers and the carbon market. Um, and so, like I said, this is just a passive revenue stream. Um, that the county can add to our timber management portfolio.
Thank you, Chris, for putting it in professional language. I'll give you a, a quick, um, elementary, uh, idea of what it is. Trees, we grow trees in the county. They make carbon. And these big expensive companies are buying our carbon credits from us. So it doesn't cost the county anything physical. It's going to take a little bit of paperwork to keep track of it. It's a good way for the county to make money for ten, up to ten years, maybe forty years. I think the first year, Chris, weren't we going to get about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, the number, the estimates are that, uh, Blue Source did, uh, about a month ago at twelve dollars a ton. Um, shows a colony revenue of about five hundred thousand. But again, that's an estimate and the carbon market changes. So. Um, when we actually go to market with our carbon credits, that number will be set at that time.
Thank you.
I watched Bayfield County as they started into this process. I attended all their meetings as they interviewed people and checked into this. Basically because we have forests, we can help offset. Yes, in, in the big scheme of things, it's a farce when it comes to ecological help. Um, but if we can get, uh, a stream of income from it and, and plan well with it. Because I, I spoke after finance to the fiscal managers. And they said, there is a way that we can use this to make it a sustainable thing, a reserve for us. So this not only gives us that little bit extra cash and another stream of income. But it also gives us a way of making a fund that we won't have to continually have our hands out to the people saying. We need to raise your taxes again. This thing can be turned into something to help us in those long planning process.
Yeah, and Laura's right. And, and I talked at the executive committee about. Uh, having our administrator and our forest administrator discuss the finances. Because as you see that chart, our income, wherever it winds up being declines over time. So we don't want to go out and spend five hundred thousand dollars every year for the next ten years, because that's not what we're going to get. It's going to decline over time. So we need to be cautious. And as Laura said, make some plans for a rainy day or whatever. Uh, take advantage of the money now, but make sure we're not spending five hundred thousand in year ten, because that's not what we're going to get. So, thank you.
We're not jumping the gun on this for several reasons. One of which is, um, if we don't approve this, we're essentially leaving money on the table each year. It's not like we can go back and, you know, somehow recoup this. Bayfield County last year approved this. They were getting eight dollars where we saw, uh, on this screen, that column was twelve dollars. We're getting fifty percent more than Bayfield County. The war in Ukraine with the effect it's having on oil prices has driven down the price of carbon credits. Um, we don't know what the outcome of that's going to be, you know, long term. And so, but these are very strong prices. When I looked online, um, at the market, there's a voluntary, uh, market and then there's a compliance market. So these are strong prices at this time. The prices will decline in decades coming as more. Um, counties, et cetera, around the world, you know, join this program. And so that's why you see smaller numbers in the decades going forward. But something, um, I've talked to the administrator briefly about is I'd really like to see Ashland and Bayfield Counties. Um, work with what's called an aggregator so that, say, down county where there's lots of forest land there. Owned by private individuals that they can aggregate that land together. And then work with a company such as Blue Source. So the individual landowners, uh, the forest owners in particular can receive compensation for that. That's a way of bringing revenue into the residents of the county. Um, I talked to, um, Natural Resource Conservation Service last week and I asked a question. You know, on the farm programs, do you see carbon credits as something, um, will be seen coming down the pike? And he said, um, possibly in the next farm bill, uh, that would be good not only in terms of income to landowners on land that's being cropped. It'd be good for the environment also, which would tie in nice with the efforts, you know, in the county in particular, uh, land and water conservation department in general. So, um, we're going to keep hearing about this and there's going to be more opportunity, just, you know, in this whole region up here.
Just one last thing. I'm asking each and every one of you on the county board to put this through. So the county is able to recoup some money that we don't really have to put out any equipment for. It's coming to the credits. So I'm asking for you all to support this. Thank you.
Anyone else want to comment? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the carbon credits agreement, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We go to seven E. Approval of transferring funds between the highway fund and general fund.
Okay, um, our consultants were here at the last, uh, Finance Committee meeting and where they went over this. Essentially what's been happening, uh, is over the years, the highway department has been. We've been borrowing money from the levy, so doing our debt levy borrowing to purchase things such as snowplows. Uh, that money should actually have been paid, the snowplow should have been paid for with money that the highway. Received from the state and the municipalities for. for applying snow or for doing other sorts of work for the state municipalities. So what this is doing is taking those borrowed funds from their debt levy and bringing it back to the general fund where it belongs. And this passed Finance Committee unanimously.
I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Motion was made by Laura Negro to approve, Ron Cinder, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We go to seven F, approval of transferring funds from the Sheriff's Department to the general fund.
Okay, this, this was brought up at the last Finance Committee meeting also. I believe many of you saw the newspaper story that came out last week. Essentially, we're transferring a hundred thousand dollars back to the general fund where it should be. We'll be setting up a restricted account within the general fund for wealth, inmate welfare. The money will then be budgeted every year. That's an account, the Sheriff's Department will include that in their budget, and it'll be accounted for through the normal budgeting process.
I'll make the motion that we approve this, too.
Kathy? A motion by Laura Negro to approve, seconded by Kathy Schute, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We go to seven G, approval of resolution R O three twenty twenty-two for T M, elected officials' wages.
The county board actually passed a version of this back in January. However, several people have expressed a desire to revisit this one. So this resolution went back to the executive committee, was it last week? And we changed the wages of the sheriff to be more competitive with the region. So, he's still in the top lowest ten per, ten in the state, but it's more competitive, at least with northern Wisconsin. So, we ra, it was raised to seventy-seven thousand for starting next year, so that would be for the next sheriff, who members elected in November of this year. And then those pay raises are two percent each year after that. The clerk of courts was changed to reflect equal pay with county treasurer, registered deeds, and county clerk. So all four would be making the same, the pay scale is based on the exact same scale the county board passed two years ago.
Bill?
I, I move for adoption.
I'll second.
Metzger to adopt.
I'll second.
Yeah, Laura's. Seconded, seconded by Clarence Campbell, any discussion? Laura?
Um, I get that we're lowest paid and such, and as we're going through the budgeting process, this is great. I would like to see, I'm okay with the, the difference in the clerk of courts piece. I'd like to see us take a few more steps in the sheriff's department piece. I, I get everybody's underpaid, we're in the middle of all of this salary stuff. I, I get, we've looked at comparisons and everything. I, I just like baby steps better. If we can start out at seventy-one or seventy-two, and then step it up a little bit each time there. I, I don't even care that it's, if we don't do it in two percent steps, but we also have to prepare as a county to fund everything. We don't know how our salary survey's gonna go, we don't know how, you know, with the war in, in Eastern Europe or Western Europe, we don't know how all of our costs are gonna be. I mean, our gas costs are going up, our, so we're gonna have more expenses. I would just like to see us take a little bit measured step with this.
I guess my question is in regard to the coroner. You know, have we looked at that? And, and is it, is it fair still for the coroner as well, if we're raising these other ones?
Uh, coroner's a part-time position.
I, I understand it's part-time, but that's not answering my question about fairness of pay.
I would say that's up to each individual county board member to decide whether it's fair.
Pat?
I agree with what Supervisor Negro said, I would prefer to see steps here, too. The consultant that we had in on the wage study, at the bottom of one slide there, he talked about, you know, the fairness and the slippery slope. This is a slippery slope. If we recall when we got ARPA funding, the administrator at the time asked employees to put in writing a request for why they thought they should get be paid more than what they were getting paid. And I recall that was about a fifteen-page document. So if any of us here think that there's not gonna be some hard feelings among other employees, I would encourage you to go back and read that document while, while most of our employees thought they should, you know, get a bump. And I understand that, but it, it's a fairness issue, it's a slippery slope. And I know that there's others that want to increase also. I would prefer, I'm open to an increase and making some adjustment there, but this is, is a, a bit too much, too fast on that slippery slope. And for those who are on finance in particular and executive, I think the county should have a policy that we, once a year, review employees' pay requests, instead of this being what seems to be a rather constant thing on agendas for finance and executive. And I think in some ways, we're not getting to some work that we should do as a county, because we spend a fair bit of time with requests that occur at times other than budget season.
First?
The only thing I would say is that, that this is setting the salaries for elected officials. In the case of the sheriff, for example, I mean, this'll set his salary for a four-year term. So if, if we do increase him a little bit, I mean, he's stuck with that for four years, and it's not until the next election that we can step it up again.
There's also a time limit on this one. For partisan office in the state, you pull papers on April fifteenth. That's for all partisan offices, so that would be everything, every election in November. So, you have until April fif, you start April fifteenth, and you turn them in by June first. So if this is not set by April fifteenth, then the old wages, it reverts to older wages that we had passed back in January.
Laura?
In my answer to that this is set for four years, yes, it is. And these jobs all come under the heading of public service. And we are the biggest group of people that knows exactly how much public service pays. It doesn't always exactly cover what we do, but when you have that drive for public service and you're at the top of a department, I know for myself, I think of myself last, there's all the people that are underneath me. Those should be the people that we deal with the most and first, which would be our salary survey, which we've got in place that we're getting done. And, and then, you know, we'll be able to do this. Do I think we should leave it as it is? No. But if we'd knock it down five thousand, my comfort level is, is starting at a five thousand dollar increase, cuz that seems the most manageable. As for the percentages for the years, I'm a little more flexible with that. But, a, and we can do a decent percent increase, I don't know. COLA is never even two percent anymore, we all know that, we're all running into inflation. If we did a five percent increase, I, I'm not good at math in my head, and I know I'm worried about stuff that's going on that I can't check on right now. So I'm not gonna math in my head, but I know I can say five thousand dollars, I'm comfortable with that first year. So, and then increases for there.
Bill?
When we vote on this, I will request a roll call vote.
I just got a quick comment on this. As the county wages, by and large, are low, grossly low. At some point in time, especially law enforcement people, we have to look into that again and see if we can't do something about it. If we find the product old or however we're gonna fund it, I don't know yet, but in order to keep our people in the, in the sheriff's department, staff, jailers, or whatever, we have to start paying them more money. Thank you. We're gonna do a roll call vote on this. We got a motion and, and a second to approve.
Chairman, this is Elizabeth Frannick, Supervisor Frannick, may I just give my two cents?
Go ahead.
Okay, I had agreed with, about the coroner with their wages. I mean, even though it's part-time, I think to, if this person ever decides not to be the coroner anymore, how are we gonna attract somebody to this position? They see things that they can't unsee, you know, and, yeah, the other positions are very important, and they also, you know, they're in positions where, like the sheriff, what he goes through, and the clerk, clerk of courts, all the court things, proceedings and everything. But the coroner, they can't unsee what they see, and I want to be able to give them a comparable wage. Thank you.
More discussion before we vote. Rich?
Did the Finance Committee approve this at all, before, before this? And Executive Committee, too?
Finance did not, Executive did.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? Pat?
Well, I'd like to offer an amendment. First of all, was there an actual motion on this? Okay. I would like to make an amendment that on these increases, that we reduce them to half of what was proposed, but with a three percent increase annually after that.
Bill? We have a motion on the floor in a second, should vote on that first.
Sorry, he's allowed to offer an amendment to the?
No.
Yeah, amendments are allowable onto any motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Laura?
I just did a, kind of a rough calculation, exactly what, what Pat proposed. If we increase year one to seventy-two thousand instead of seventy-seven, and then go with a three percent increase each year, the fourth year would get it up to seventy-eight thousand six seventy-six. Would go from seventy-two to seventy-four one sixty to seventy-six three eighty-five, and then the fourth year would be seventy-eight six seventy-six. With a three percent increase each year.
Does Sheriff wanna speak?
Thank you, this has no impact on me, I'm advocating for the next sheriff. If Mr. Kenny stated, you know, it's pretty high comparables, well, if you compare right now at the seventy-seven thousand that you're proposing for the other department heads, two, two other department heads that I, that I've seen, what is it, seventy-eight thousand, and what is it, seventy-five thousand? So that would put the sheriff at least in the middle of two other department heads that are comparable in size. If you said it at what it's at right now, when the wage study is completed in the end of this year, it may be where the sheriff would be paid less than most of his staff, if the comparisons are the goal, the way I think they might. At this point right now, as I've stated before to the Finance and to the Exec, that the sheriff's wages, and this like Patty included before, does not include overtime base pay, sixty-five seven and sixty-five five for sergeant. So, right now, as an increases goal for each year for their, for the union, it is quite possible that the staff will be paid higher than, than the sheriff's wages are. Like I said, has no impact on me. However, I think that wages that you have set up here right now are comparable to the other ones that we have throughout the, still lower than the other ones, but still better than it was before, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second on the floor to approve this, I think we have to vote on this first.
There's an amendment, you're, there's an amendment.
Have an amendment that would change the figure.
Right, so you would vote on the amendment first. If you vote to amend it to the Mr. Kenny's suggestion, then the new numbers would read, and seventy-two thousand for twenty-twenty-three, seventy-four thousand one sixty for twenty-four, seventy-six thousand three eighty-five for twenty-five, and seventy-eight thousand six seventy-six for two, twenty-twenty-six. So that would be a base salary of seventy-two thousand with a three percent raise going each year. Procedurally, if you vote yes, if you vote yes on this, that would replace the, the numbers in here, and then if you were to vote on that, you would pass the new resolution. If you vote no, then the amendment is defeated, and you're back at the original, at what's on the screen right now. So, so just so everybody understands, and I'll answer any procedural questions after Mr. Metzger.
Bill? Are we doing anything with the coroner's salary in this friendly amendment?
That was not as, that was not made in the amendment. However, I would suggest for the, keeping everything straight, and so everybody understands what they're voting on, that if you wanted to do something with the coroner's salary, do you offer a separate amendment after this one is disposed of?
Pat?
I guess I understand the adjustments that are proposed for the sheriff. How about the clerk of courts? My understanding, it seemed logical, if we're bringing that up in line with the other ones, that that seems like the right thing to do. And, and I support that in not adjusting that one.
The amendment, as far as, as I heard it, and I understand it, only addresses the sheriff. That if the amendment passes, the clerk of courts would stay the same, and the coroner would stay the same. In order to change either of those, you'd have to offer an amendment after this one is disposed of.
Before we vote on this, I just have a comment. If you've looked at the, the graph on the rest of the sheriffs in, in the state, the sixty-seven thousand we were paying was an insult. I don't think we should be nitpicking at a time like this, I think we should bring the salary up to where it should have been for years. We're gonna have to scratch to figure out how to pay for these increases, but for God's sakes, people who put their life on the line every day have gotta be compensated. And if we don't do that, we're gonna lose good people. So, with that, I guess we can vote on the amendment.
To be clear, the amendment is to reduce the base salary to seventy-two thousand, for the sheriff only, to reduce the base salary from twenty-twenty-three to seventy-two thousand with three percent raise increases thereafter.
Bill?
Roll call vote, please.
Dylan Jennings? Michael Berlin?
No.
Richard Corpora?
Yes.
George Mica?
Yeah.
Martin Vitek?
No.
Richard Huber?
No.
Doreen Hannanen?
No.
John Weiner?
Yes.
Kathy Schute?
Yes.
Gary Murdick?
No.
Laura Negro?
Yes.
Matthew McKenzie?
No.
Filomena Quebec?
No.
William Metzger?
No.
Clarence Campbell?
Yes.
Patrick Kinney?
Yes.
Charles Ortmann? Elizabeth Frannick? Elizabeth Fr-
No.
Richard Pufa?
No.
Ronald Stendor?
No.
Seven yeses? Seven yeses. Eleven nos.
Seven, the amendment fails.
Pardon?
The amendment failed eleven.
What was it count? Eleven to what?
Seven to eleven.
Seven to eleven. Okay, the amendment failed seven to eleven. Now we'll vote on the resolution. Uh, roll call vote. What?
Michael Berlin.
Yes.
Richard Corpora.
Yes.
George Mica.
Yes.
Martin Vitek.
Yes.
Richard Huber.
Yes.
Doreen Hannanen.
Yes.
John Weiner. Kathy Schute.
Yes.
Gary Murdick.
Yes.
Laura Nagro.
No.
Matt McKenzie.
Yes.
Filomena Quebec.
Yes.
William Metzinger.
Yes.
Clarence Campbell.
Yes.
Patrick Kinney.
No.
Elizabeth Frannick.
Yeah.
Richard Pufa.
Yes.
Ronald Stendor.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, two no.
Motion carries. Thank you. Go to seven eight approval of resolution R O three twenty-two fourteen eleven. What?
Um, I would like to address the coroner's salary. I think there should be some increase in the compensation. I don't know what the dollar amount should be, but it's for the next four years. Well, you know, I I think if if I would like to make an amendment. On this thing, I I would like to bring it up for discussion and see what the rest of the county board members feel about this, if if it's appropriate.
Uh, Mr. Metzinger, you'd be you'd uh need to make a motion to reconsider. Um, and then needed second in the county board within vote on reconsideration, and you would open it up to further amendments.
I would second that motion. This is Frannick.
Yes.
I I would um make a motion to reopen only the county coroner's salary.
Uh, Mr. The whole thing, you'd be reopening the whole resolution to reconsideration.
Okay, if if it's necessary, I will do that.
And you would need a second.
Do we have a second? Question.
Mr. Supervisor Frannick.
Supervisor Frannick made the motion. Would you like to second it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, you need to call and vote.
Discussion, discussion, discussion.
Uh, it's a not, it's a not, I you. I don't, it's a not discussionable reconsideration. You just have to vote.
Dan, can you just please update us where we're at?
Sure. Okay, so where we're at is the resolution. Listening right on the screen in front of everybody for the payment of the elected officials was passed by the board. Eleven by, was it sixteen to two? All right, uh, Mr. Metzinger would like to readdress the issue of the coroner. Where to do so. There needs to be a motion to reconsider reconsider the resolution. Ms. Frannick and Miss made the motion, Mr. Metzinger seconded. So now we are reconsidering this resolution. Uh, it's a non-debatable motion, so there these just needs to be a vote to occur. Should the vote be, should uh everybody vote yes? Or the majority vote yes, then you'll be reconsidering the resolution and it's amendable again, so you can address the coroner's issue. Um, if the county board votes no on reconsideration, then it's not amendable. Nor is this resolution able to come up at future meetings, because you've already considered it once.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Question, Dan.
Yes, sir.
If this is approved, are we gonna have to go through the sheriff's salary again?
No, you do not have to go through the sheriff's salary again. Um, your only way to go through that again is by another amendment. However, the same amendment can't be offered because it was just defeated.
All right, everybody thoroughly confused yet? Ready to vote?
So you're voting on reconsideration of the resolution. A yes vote means you're reconsidering, a no vote means no.
We should probably do a roll call.
It's done.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Richard Corpora.
Yes.
George Mica.
Yeah.
Martin Vitek.
Yeah.
Richard Huber.
No.
Doreen Hannanen.
No.
John Weiner.
No.
Kathy Schute.
No.
Gary Murdick.
No.
Laura Nagro.
No.
Matt McKenzie.
Yes.
Filomena Quebec.
Yes.
William Metzinger.
Yes.
Patrick Kinney.
No.
Elizabeth. Clarence Campbell.
Yes.
Charles Ortman. Sorry, Elizabeth Frannick.
Yeah.
Richard Pufa.
Yes.
Ronald Stendor.
Yes.
Michael Berlin.
No.
Ten yeses. Eight nos.
Okay, so now you're up for reconsideration and Mr. Metzinger, you're an amendment would be in order now.
Okay, now is a time to comment. I don't know the amount. I think that's important. When we decide what our motion's going to be, what to raise the coroner, if it's a percentage, otherwise they're locked in. And if 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 you decide to go two percent or three percent or whatever, if you wanted to do a flat figure. But, you know, I I just felt that the coroner should get some type of increase. And otherwise, uh, if if the county gave their employees a two percent increase, they are locked, they are not. Eligible for this because it's an elected position. So, you know, that's why I I think the coroner deserves some consideration and I I. You know, if if um if you don't have any suggestions, I would move that they be given a two percent. What?
Uh, Mr. Metzger, it's a two percent raise every year, starting from the seventeen-nine fifty-two. I can tell you the seventeen-nine fifty-two is a two percent raise from the current paste.
Oh, but so that that is a, that is a raise then?
It's a two percent raise, yes.
Okay.
Now, if you want to increase the base, which would be twenty-three, that would increase the two percentage points going on years.
Filomena.
Just, you know, for discussion purposes and because I'm curious. Uh, you said this is a part-time job, and so what, can you just describe a little bit about? How many hours this person works and and their duties and expectations?
I think the sh- well, the sheriff might be able to answer that better, but um. The coroner is called whenever there's a death. Um, you know, and ninety-nine times out of a hundred cases, it's, everybody knows what the cause of death is and. You know, the doctors have already written that out for them. On the odd occasion where there's a.
I am so sorry to interrupt, um, supervisors and um administrator. I have to go to work, so I'm sorry. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all the supervisors' time that are are not gonna be with us next month. Thank you. Goodbye.
Okay, Dan, carry on.
I'm sorry. So the coroner would help the police investigate in situations where the cause of death isn't known. There's not very many cases a year up here, thankfully. So her caseload is, I mean, it's really dependent upon how. World works, I guess, is the best way.
And and just just one follow-up question. Do you do you have any information about comparables in other counties?
Uh, that's hard to pick because so many different counties have different caseloads. You know, I know bigger counties. Uh, you know, are moving to medical examiners, which that is a full-time medical professional. Who gets paid, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year or more, um, because they have the crime rates to do it. No. It's really hard, it's too hard to compare because it's not like law enforcement where it's similar to everywhere. It really has to do with the kind of deaths you have.
I I think I can add a little more to what the coroner does. Any death in the county, the coroner is responsible to go there and do an investigation. As has been pointed out, many of them are, you know, it's obvious that the individual succumbed to a heart attack or something of that nature. Um, beyond that, many times they're also responsible for inventorying the body. And what that means is deciding, you know, what of their personal effects are on them. Um, you know, as far as going through their wallet, how much money do they have on them? Uh, you know, those sort of things. And if there's anything suspicious, they're the ones that decide whether an autopsy is ordered or not. And uh, th- they they also deal with uh our homeless folks that that, you know, should any of them be found dead as far as. Having to deal with the cremation and and or however else they they deal with the body. Um, so there's, they they have some deputies, they can authorize deputies to assist them and and that's in their budget. I don't believe that comes out of their salary here. Um, but it's, you know, it's three o'clock in the morning. You know, you if somebody shows up dead in their bed, um, they're the ones that go and deal with that, so.
Matt, do you think you would have a ballpark number, how many times the coroner gets called out to um classify a death?
Well, I would would imagine if we just look at the newspaper and the number of obituaries that are in there and. You you know, in the in the course of a week, what are we, what are we talking? Maybe five to ten? And you you know, I don't know how many per month, um, but. You know, as was pointed out, it's, some of them are simple, some of them aren't, so.
Yeah, it it one of the problems we have here today is, and and everybody's trying to figure out how many times does a coroner go out? I I've never heard the coroner say they think they're overpaid or underpaid. Uh, I mean, but to be honest, we we really should have had some homework done before. I don't know how you can raise a a somebody's salary for the next four years without knowing what they do. If the coroner came and said, I'm spending way too much time here, here, and here. You have ju- I I don't know what the justification for the coroner is. I mean, I realize. What they do, but it is it so time-consuming that nobody wants to be the coroner?
Having worked in the jail and our dispatch center is right there, and they're the ones who page out the corners. More times than not, the calls are usually in the middle of the night, on a weekend, on a holiday, during bad weather. They're always called, I mean, it's usually. When they're home with their families in the middle of the night and the weather is usually bad. So these these people really need to be commended because they're always getting called out in the middle of the night when it's horrible weather.
Rich.
Yes, I can uh add a little bit to that. Um, I used to be a deputy coroner many years ago. So the coroner doesn't handle all the calls. They have deputy corners that handle calls too. At least they did when I was on, so. Um, the coroner doesn't have to take all of the calls. And so, and another thing, I was wondering if she, if the coroner's paid uh this salary. Then is the coroner paid for when when they go out on a case, like let's say there's a case takes three hours and you get paid for three hours and then mileage. Uh, that used to be the way it was. Um, so I just added that. Thanks.
Charles.
I don't think we're here to argue. For or against what the coroner is doing. I mean, we're setting the salary for the next term of office. And anybody who takes out nomination papers to run. Knows that, and they know what the duties of the job are, and they have to decide whether. They're gonna run for that position. In light of that salary and knowing what the duties of the job are, and and our job here is not to discuss and debate. What hours they go out and and what they do. We're just setting the salary and they decide whether they're gonna run for that position or not based on the salary and knowing what that. Position entails. So I don't think we need to get into a whole discussion about what the coroner does and and what hours they're called out and so forth.
Bill.
After after hearing this discussion, I would withdraw my motion.
We didn't make motions.
Oh, I didn't make a motion yet?
Nobody's made a motion.
Oh, okay. What? Well, Liz left. Okay, I'm sorry.
Right, so there's there's no motion on the floor right now, so um. If the county board desires, they can just table and move move to the next item, or you can offer an amendment or whatever you choose.
Dick, I move to table this discussion.
Do we have a second? We'll second it.
It was it was an amendment.
There was no amendment offered.
Right.
We're just reconsidering, and we can just cease discussion of reconsidering it. There doesn't need to be a motion to table, because there's nothing to table. We're just.
We're moving on to the next agenda item.
Yeah, we just move on to the next agenda item.
So, and that also means this resolution is is not a met. Once you move on to the next agenda item, this resolution is no longer amendable. Just so everybody's aware.
Okay, I guess. We're going on to seven eight. Thanks, Bill.
We we have a question.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
Pardon?
The next item.
You, seven eight, you're approving.
H. Adopt H.
Motion approved by Mike Berlin, seconded by Marty Vitek. A discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it can be, everybody knows what they're voting on, so the record can show properly.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yep.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Seven. Mike.
Motion to adopt um and approve handbook changes.
Well, strangely enough, I didn't get a thing on handbook changes.
You didn't because the executive committee passed it before, after the packets went out.
Okay, what is this? We don't have information on it?
It it's in the pack, it's uh, yeah, it's on.
It's the holiday one.
But um, if you want to, do I second that I can explain it?
I would second that motion.
Okay, so um, this was a proposal that came out in executive committee. Uh, to add two more county holidays to the county calendar. This would add. Uh, President's Day and a spring holiday that coincides with the Friday before Easter. Uh, the the county, the ex- and executive committee members, please correct me if I'm wrong here, because I'm, I don't want him to speak. Um, the executive committee members felt that because we're having such problems with wage increases in the county, that. It'd be, and that we're going through this wage study, which is gonna be somewhat difficult for some people, that. As a way of saying thank you and how much they appreciate county employees, that they want to restore these two holidays. These are two holidays the county had prior to Act Ten. And they'd like to bring them back. Um, this would put right all non-union employees and union employees on the same level. Currently, the union employees have, they had those tools. they had those two as holidays and they decided to negotiate that out as the floating days. So they still have 12 holidays, whereas the rest of the county staff has 10. So the reason why we have to name the holidays is because the county building cannot close unless they're named holidays. That means the registered deeds would have to be here, the clerk would have to be here, the treasurer would have to be here, the court couldn't close unless they're named holidays. And so we can't do floating holidays like the the union employees. So this is a way of the executive committee felt of showing appreciation and thank you to the employees. And it would take effective immediately, meaning April 15th would be a holiday. So, did I get that right, Mr.?
I just know if you want to, wonder if you want to do the Easter holiday that way, because sometimes it's nicer on that Sunday to have the Monday off too. So it could be a flexible one. So if it's on Saturday, have it be the Friday before.
If it's a Sunday. If it's flexible, we can't close the courthouse.
Okay. Just ask.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's nice to have the closer day off.
Unfortunately, state statutes require all those buildings to be open if the county's up, offices to be open, the county's open.
Okay, I I done a little checking on this. The last time the county had this was 2011. That's when they had this, and that's when it was taken away. The sheriff's department already gets it by making it a clo- a holiday. The courthouse is closed, no one has to be here, so you're not paying extra money.
We have a motion. Who made the motion?
Mike Berlin.
Oh, that's okay, I'm sorry. And Bill seconded.
Bill Metzger seconded.
All right, any more discussion? A motion on the second on the table to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Seven J, approval of capital budget improvement plan and procedures.
This is something that came from our consultants again, and was at the finance committee meeting. It puts into practice, there's a plan in here about creating a capital budget, so we'd be budgeted out for five years for every department's needs slash wants. So I'll pick on highway because they're the easiest to pick on. Matt has a list of roads that he wants to do this year, next year, the next year, the next year. We, those would all go on a five-year budget plan. And so would every other department. So if HHS needs a car, or if land conservation needs a second boat, or whatever, that would go on to this capital improvement plan. And every year of budget, you would have an opportunity to see what our ongoing expenses are going to be and what we're looking at financing in future years, so you better manage your debt. So this is setting the policy up, the procedure up. There's an example of the form we'll use that obviously will probably change a little bit as time goes on, but this is setting up a policy.
I'll make a motion that we pass this.
Motion was made by Laura.
I second the adoption.
Seconded by Mike Berlin. Any more discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions honoring Charles Ortman, Richard Corporal, Doreen Hanneman, and Dylan Jennings. Rather than read four resolutions, which are all the same except for the name, or can I get a motion to incorporate these all in one?
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if everybody just voted them separately? So there's a separate recorded vote for each member? Be a little bit more.
Pardon?
It'd be a little bit more meaningful if you had a separate recorded vote for each member. So so take one up, the vote on it, take another up, vote on it. That way they each have a role, a vote for them.
Well, you're the boss. You're going to do the honor.
Dick, um, each of these four employees have been here for a different amount of years, and it would be nice to get it into the record how many years they've served, served their county. So I'd like to read them one at a time.
Will go into the record as written.
Of reading the, you don't have to read all the, read all the resolutions. Just say, um, just take up the first resolution, but I take up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are individual votes.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Charles Ortman.
I'll second that.
And then Mr. Ortman couldn't be here, but he he said, thank you very much to the county board. He appreciated his time here and appreciated every member here. And he, again, he says, thank you.
Bill.
Discussion. I I would like to see the county clerk send each of the members a copy of the resolution that's passed.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I needed to say.
Okay. We have a motion on the second to approve the resolution for Charlie Ortman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And what opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to read the second one. Mr. Vice Chair.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Richard Corporal for his years of service.
Motion by Jerry Murdock, seconded by Mike Berlin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next.
I'd like to make a motion to honor Doreen Hanneman's resolution, R O three two zero, two zero two two, one four one four.
We have a second by Phil Amina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Microphones, please. I would just like to say thank you very much. It's been a very short term. It's been interesting and educating. And had it not been for the redistricting, I probably would have considered again, but I did not want to compete with a good friend of mine, Kathy. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen.
Make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Dylan Jennings. Motion by Mike Berlin, seconded by Marty Vitek. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to give all of these retiring members a big hand. Speech. Speech, Richard. I guess that's it, Dana.
Dan, could we get a picture of the retirees with you? Okay, at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Administrator updates.
Okay, I just a couple of things I wanted to update you on. One, you saw that we're in full swing now with the wage study. And department has, will have until April 15th to get their job descriptions back to, back to me to give back to Carlson Detman. We did want to do this meeting before the new county board came on because otherwise we wouldn't be able to do it for a couple of meetings and it would be stale. So April 15th will be when they have to turn in their job descriptions to the building. I know some of you are probably wondering about the courthouse and possible repairs on it. Stage one was to repair that one beam that was rotting out. We have not found anybody to do that yet. No contractor wants wants to do it. We one of them, we had one that quoted doing something that's not going to work in our opinions. He wanted to bolt a piece of steel to the rotting I-beam and then then bolt it into the wall. The problem is the mortar in that wall has come apart also, and there's a giant crack in it. So I just, we didn't feel that it would, it's structural, has enough structural integrity to do that. Nobody else has bid on it. So a couple of people said they don't want to because of all the paper up there. We have cellulose insulation up there, which is paper. So we, now the snow's melting, we'll be getting our structural engineer back here. His plan was to come here when the snow melted and hopefully in the next two weeks, or if we get a nice thunderstorm soon, we'll get rid of all the snow and he can come back and do that. When he comes back, I'll be having, asking him to look at the 514 building. That's a building that concerns me a lot. I don't, I honestly don't think the building is very safe. But I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer that question. I do say I I would like to, after the new county board forums, I would like, if there's any interested county board members that want to go down there and look at that building, excuse me, I'd be more than happy to take you down there and show you what I see the problems are. Just so you have a firsthand look at it. But we do have to start thinking long-term what we're going to do with that building. The repairs, I'm going to tell you, are going to be expensive, and the building's not worth it. So I, we still owe a lot of money on it, and we're probably going to end up eating that money just to get out of the liability. Think of it as sunk cost. It's already gone. So anybody who knows of a, so that, I don't know how that's going to work. It might be moving CCS to Sanborn, or it may necessitate the purchase of a new building and consolidating departments and stuff. Let's see, zoning. I don't know if all you have heard, but Josh Rowley resigned as our zoning administrator. He's now working for the state of Wisconsin. I hopefully have somebody new starting next week, I'm hoping. We have a few details to work out, but he will, yeah, but he will be taking over all the zoning functions. I've been keeping Supervisor Kenny apprised of what's going on as chair of that committee. So hopefully next meeting we'll be able to announce that there's a new zoning person. Other than that, I have questions from people. Thank you.
Our county border board supervisors' reports and updates. John.
I would like to really thank Dan for the great job he's doing. I know he helped me on the Snowville Lions Club. We got that on a roll again. I just want to thank you very much for your, all your efforts you're doing to help Ashland County here. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Amina.
Just a quick comment. I'm the county board representative on the Northern Waters Library Board. Ashland County can have two representatives on that board, one of them being a non-county board member. We have an opening for that position right now. So if any of you know of anybody in your districts that would be a good member of the Northern Waters Library Board, someone who uses libraries, someone who is involved in some way with libraries, let me know and we can get somebody else nominated to that board. Again, it's a non-county board member, but each county that's in part of that board can have two representatives on that board.
Anybody else? Kathy.
For all of you on the county board, the city of Mellon and the Mellon Area Chamber of Commerce is doing a roly-poly event. It's April 30th. It's a fundraiser for Mellon, and they sell roly-polies, and then they honor the best roly-polies with the a $200 prize. It's, we have a silent auction. The city of Ashland has been wonderful to the city of Mellon with gifts for the auction sale. They, the city of Ashland has come through big time. This is our first time we're doing it after the pandemic is over, and we're welcoming you and inviting all of you to come to Mellon, do the roly-poly contest, try to put some, win some prizes, and the grand prize is a $100 gift card at Deepwater Grill, and then one night stay at the Cobblestone Inn. So you get a weekend in Ashland. You don't pay for it. It's your meal ticket that gets you into the ride. So come on down to Mellon, have some fun, and thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Anybody else? Gary.
Okay, I'm not going to take up everybody's time too long, but I'm going to discuss something that we're going to have to address that reorg. And one of the items, just using one as an example, the carbon credit approval, it went to forestry. It was recommended. It went to exec. It was recommended, and it came to the county board. We need to discuss in the reorg, what happens to recommendations from committees? If the committee makes a recommendation and doesn't come to the county board, then we might as well ban all committees. And I, I came into this meeting extremely angry. I'm not saying I'm not angry yet. But I will not get through the April meeting without losing a few pieces of anger. You cannot have committees recommend to another committee and then recommend to the county board and then have it disappear. It needs to come to the county board. If there's a disagreement at this level, that's fine. Then that item can be talked about, defeated, approved. But we cannot have committees make recommendations, especially when two committees pass a resolution forward it, and it never showed up on the agenda. That cannot happen, and I will not let it happen again. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Here.
John.
I would like to say something is that I was not going to run again, but just this last two weeks, I got back on to writing. The reason why this is because I love working with every one of the board members. I love my, working with the committees because this is not supposed to be like a job. It's actually supposed to be fun too. I belong to two committees with George Mitzka. Doesn't get any better. And that's basically what what the thing is. We all get along. We all have different ideas, but we all get along. And I want to thank everybody here for their hard work and committees in making Ashland County a wonderful place. Thank you.
He's first.
In response to Supervisor Murdock, you mentioned forestry, exec, and then the board. You missed finance. It came to finance too. But I would add that in the reorganization meeting, or if this is a change in the handbook, you should add to that list the county board chair, that if a committee has passed something and it comes to the board, and there's a decision, that that not be another avenue for things to be brought back to the committee also. Otherwise, we're, again, having more meetings and kicking cans more times. That's the other avenue that things come back.
Wait, motion to adjourn. Before we do that, it's sort of mention turning your vouchers if you have any. Motion to adjourn on the table. Do we have a second? I can, by Kathy Schuie, all of you favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.